We call the meeting to order. As is our beginning always, would you stand and please face the flag? Move your head here as we say the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, does any, does anyone have anything in addition on the agenda? Nothing for you?
No.
If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Rebecca on the motion, Katie on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Before I get in too deep, Bill has got a work detail. He's out of town for work, so he won't be attending this evening. Schedule presenters. Nicolette Herneke is here to talk about her humanities trip and looking for approval as such.
Hi, I'm Nicolette Herneke and Holly Windjet and I teach humanities. We have twenty, I think around twenty-five students signed up next year for the humanities course. When they take the course, we offer a trip to Europe. And because of COVID, we weren't able to go two years ago, and we usually go every two years. So we have a group of students that are interested in going next summer. So we're looking at going through EF again, and it would include London this year. So it'd be London, Paris, and Rome. It won't be a custom tour like we usually do just because of the short time, because usually we have two years to prepare for it. But if we don't do it next summer, this whole group of seniors will miss the opportunity to go on this trip. The trip is really geared towards our curriculum. So what we learn in the class is what they see when we go over. And I have one person that's been on the trips who maybe helped back up the trip. And I have a parent here that had a child go on the trip too. It's an educational trip. Education comes first, and we are really focused on being there and learning. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
How was the funding for something like this?
Funding? In the past, we have done, and we still, I believe, have a lot of the books to do concession stand and to do a dinner, and also the family fair receipts as a way we do some of the funding. So when the students work in the concession stand, then that money goes towards their trip. When they do the humanities dinner, that money goes towards the trip. And the family fair money goes towards the whole group as far as paying for our tips or extra meals or things like that. Otherwise, it's up to the students to come up with the money.
Do you have a tour guide?
Yes, when we go through EF tours, they give us a 24/7 tour guide, which has proven to be very helpful in the past. I've been going on these trips since '07. And prior to me taking the students on trips, Dennis Kallo and John Fogerty have been doing that for years and years and years. So this isn't a new trip, but it needs to be approved every time we do it, so.
How many students do you think will be going?
I'm not sure, and that's part of the reason why we're not doing a custom trip, because we don't have a limit. With a custom trip, if you only have a few students, it becomes so expensive that they can't afford to go on it. So we are going, I'm, I'm taking a trip out of the catalog, which means that we will probably be, well, not probably, we will be with other schools. I'm probably expecting probably no more than eighteen, maybe twelve, but I can go with as few as six, so that would be fine. If there's six students that want to go, I'll be more than happy to take them. Any other questions?
Where can you drop off the family fair receipts to get them to you?
Right in the office. Yep.
I have some.
Awesome, awesome. Just FYI, we might not actually do the humanities dinner this year. I might propose doing a different kind of fundraiser. So we'll see. I'll bring that up with Jeff and see if I can get that approved.
When do we do our approval?
Summertime.
Summertime, so.
So team, this is an action item. So consideration to approve the humanities trip is what's here, so we need a motion, a second, and we can have further discussion if you choose.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Katie on the motion. Brenda on the second. Is there any other discussion?
Is it down under the action items or?
No, no.
Just write it in.
I just kind of wrote it in.
Yep, yep. So we have a motion and a second to approve the humanities trip 2023. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes.
Thank you very much. The kids will be happy.
Well, actually, I have one more question.
Sure.
It doesn't have anything to do with.
Can you go with?
No. What ages get to go? So for like 2023?
Yeah, you have to take the course.
Sure, and what years do you take that course?
Juniors and seniors. So actually, students that have, seniors that have graduated, and then juniors that will be seniors.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next is public input. Comments are welcome from students, residents of the district, taxpayers of the district, people with children in the district, and employees of the district, and must relate to school business and not exceed five minutes. The board cannot engage in a discussion during the comment period, but will take the information and find the answers if that is appropriate. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Individual complaint should be handled privately with billing administrators and/or the superintendent. As part of the board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassinations at a public board meeting. We will now open for public input. Does anyone have any? Mark?
Mark Lund, taxpayer of the district. I wanted to address your acceptance of gifts. There's a book in there called Wing of Fire Dragon Slayer. It's a hardcover book. I did some research on that. That book is an LGBT-type book. The dragon character is actually a gay dragon who has feelings for another dragon of the same sex. Also, probably from the reviews, the author has a tendency to attack male traits as villains, and yet they're supportive of female characters that express the same male traits. So I'm questioning why, I'm sure Mr. Sampson's reviewed the book and reviewed the author. This series of books is about ten to twelve books. I don't know if this is the first series book that draws kids in to start reading these books, but it's, the characters in the book are LGBT-type characters, so thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak? We will close public input. Consideration to approve the finance report. Mr. Davis?
It's usually your typical financial report up there. The cash balances, the data report, the two checking accounts, the versions in the community resource. Not a whole lot of major highlights went through there. I was picking on a couple things. This is at the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. But as we wrap up the fiscal year, some of the, you'll see the first payment of the county taxes will come in at the end of May, May 23rd roughly. Those are estimates. We usually get the actual amounts from the counties just a couple days before they release those payments. The other one, right in the middle of that board right there, that would be the Invenergy from the city portion and the school portion. And those are amounts that were kind of contracted when Invenergy came into Cannon Falls community. Payments in lieu of taxes. As we receive those, and we have those budgeted into our plan. Part of it was directed just for elementary roof lease payments. And once that was paid for, we've kept those funds into facility projects as those are dollars that we are upkeep, upkeep and maintain, some deferred maintenance items within the school district. What you'll see here again goes from just the end of the fiscal year. As we work through budget planning for fiscal year 23, you'll start to see a lot of more in-depth numbers there at the May and June meetings as we will approve preliminary budget for 23 in May and revised budget, final revised budget for 22 in June. And then as well, we'll start working on the entire cash flow then for fiscal 23 as well. The important thing to recognize is cash, not having to do any anticipation borrowing again, so. Lots going on financially within the district now as we respond to, start planning towards the projects for the bond for next summer. Hopefully, the elementary roof taken care of as part of that bond this summer. The majority of that project happening next year. There will be accounts set up. We'll be able to do some investment of those funds as we receive them. I hope they earn some interest on that as we know with COVID inflation, workforce and materials, that there may be some added costs. Where we can earn on that project will be enough to offset some of those costs as they arise. Any questions? I can do my best answer, whatever you may have.
I just am questioning that Invenergy School, Invenergy City.
Yep.
So we get, we get an annual from Invenergy, but I wasn't spacing out the city portion.
Yeah, the city portion is part of the deal. They had worked out with Invenergy when they came in. The city is getting a much larger portion, and then they roll out a portion to the school district, and that's what we set up as in lieu of the tax as well. So that one has a little bit of flatter goals with it. So I think when we started out receiving up the city funds from Invenergy, it was slightly under $100,000, and each year that kind of creeps up just a little bit. We have several more years left for them on their tax-free portion, and they'll go hit the regular tax rule after that.
So not only do we get a direct input, we also get a piece of the city negotiated contract.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Josh? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion? Second? I'll second. Seconded by Luke. Further discussion? All in, all in favor of the approval of the finance report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. As a rule, Jeff likes to recognize folks that have given us gifts.
Sure. The first item is from Shelley and John Keelman, Wing of Fire Dragon Slayer hardcover book. Minnesota Orthodontics Laura Elbers Classroom for $200. The Cannon Falls Education Foundation has a listing of items here from display boards for district-wide usage for Nicolette Herneke's art show for $7,000. Science museum field trip, ninth grade for Riley Boukai for $1,000. Digital signage for the middle school, high school for Mr. Hodges at $6,200. Laminator and supplies for the middle school, high school for Mr. Hodges for $3,927.15. An activity table for pre-kindergarten classroom for $609.99. And a vertical endeavors field trip from Margaret Dyson's classroom for $1,500. There's a $50 donation from Dee Husef for baseball. $50 donation from L. Reed for baseball. $500 from Aspen Equipment for robotics. $250 from Gemini for theater and drama department, and $250 for Gemini from the track team. We want to thank you for their generous donations.
You know, in, in answering Mark's question, or at least giving it some thought, this book, have we in the past had any books that we didn't allow to come into the school for one reason or another?
I'm not aware of it, you know, unless somebody else is.
Just want to understand, I didn't, I didn't look at the book. I take it that we, we've reviewed things like that, and if it's not appropriate, we just don't accept it. So. Anyone else have any questions? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Rebecca on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Superintendent's report. Sir?
Thank you. Mine is pretty much written as considered in the action items, but I also want to talk a little bit about the hail damage from the storm that we had last week. We have filed a claim with our insurance company, and we are in the process of getting adjusters out here to look at our elementary roof, our fieldhouse roof, our concessions roof, other roofs. We've also had equipment that was damaged on top of those roofs, among other items that were sitting out at the time that the storm rolled through. So we will have more information coming on that as that develops. I would not even put a guess on the timetable of that over the next month or so.
Hopefully, it just says residential, they're kind of fucked up. There's a lot of adjusters trying to give to everybody, so it could be a little while. And it's extensive. We're going to review all four buildings. Give us a pretty comprehensive report of what's potentially covered in our hail. What's definitely may not be, but it'll take some time for me to go through it. I guess the important part is that we're looking out for the best of the district. They have them take a look at, you know, the structure and, and then it may have received damage through the hail.
COVID update. We've seen some pretty consistent numbers over, since our last board meeting. Nothing in terms of a huge spike, and so that's, that's still relieving. We still have cases coming through though. Construction, construction update. We do have a few meetings coming up here in the next week or so. We will have some more user group meetings coming up as far as design of the process. We are continuing in that mode as of right now. Once we have more definitive updates on where we are headed with the design, we'll certainly give updates as well.
Does the COVID group continue to meet, or is that just as necessary?
It's been once a month or once every other month, I would say.
Yeah, yeah, that seems right. Questions for Jeff? Okay, moving on. We have no old business to deal with. Under new business, consideration to approve the procedures and guidelines for facility use and equipment use.
Reed's in charge of this area here, and this is a facilities and equipment usage guidelines. And I don't know if Reed wants to give a quick update on the process for updating this.
Couple of big things that we just want to do is clean up some of the language and make sure that it's accurate and items that we're following in regards to our rentals. And the other major component that you can see right there on the screen is we created a Class 2A for the nonprofit. And that Class 2A, that's to deal with our kids and our programming. So we want to make sure that we're looking out for those groups within our community, helping them out in regards to the fees. We did not raise any of the fees in the structure of that Class 2A, but we did look at making things a little bit more current and competitive in our, in our 2B and 3 categories, if you will. But a lot of it is language, just to clean some things up and to put some things in writing in regards to expectations. And that's gone through facilities.
Facilities, Lee, as I'm saying, did you attend the meeting?
Yeah, I was there. I think, I think the biggest thing I took out of that, and I appreciate what Reed did, was creating that second class. We knew we had to make rates fall in line with what it costs us, but that second class does make it friendly for nonprofits, people associated with Cannon Falls to get in that building and rent at a friendly rate. So you'll see the, the last class would be people with no ties to the community, that kind of thing, would have a little higher rate. So we'd give a hometown discount if you'd like to see it that way.
Sure.
Rebecca, were you there?
I was there. I think Luke summarized it really well. I think it allows for us to cover some of the costs of our expenses and things like that in terms of maintenance to have the facility up and running and maintained the way we need them to. So I mean, I think it was a really thorough job and a lot of necessary updates, so.
Looks like the last revision date on this was 3/20, so we were, we were due for a review. So what's your, what would be your recommendations on here to accept this?
Yep.
Any questions for Reed? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the facilities and equipment use guidelines.
I'll make the motion.
On Luke is the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Rebecca. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the 2224 principals contract.
Yes, the principals have settled, and their contract is in line with the other contracts that have been settled with the teachers and the administrative staff. Their percentages are a little bit different from year to year, but total package over the two-year biennium is equal to the other groups as well.
Yep, looks, looks like we just changed numbers around a little bit, but the outcome's the same.
Yep.
Okay. Questions? I would look for a motion to approve the principals contract.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Brenda on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve the $1,000 Cannon Valley Senior Center Scholarship.
Sure. There's been a request from Cannon Valley Senior Center. They would like to offer a $1,000 scholarship to our graduating seniors. The new scholarship will be awarded as follows. Cannon Valley Senior Center Scholarship will award one award of $1,000. Scholarship shall be awarded to a senior who is pursuing a degree at a two- or four-year college, university or tech college. Selection is based on character, citizenship, leadership, school, and community involvement. Applicants must submit an essay on the importance of community service and how I have served my community. Applicants will also need two letters of recommendation. Selection is made by the members of the senior center. Recommend and approve on this.
Any questions?
Is this just a one-time or? One-time?
One-time. Okay, if you have no questions, looking for a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve.
Brenda?
I'll second.
On the motion, Katie on the second. Any other discussion?
I'd say the senior center is also getting their book buddies program up and running with the press writers. So that's great. To thank them throughout, as well as the scholarship.
Nice partnership. You're offering a thank you?
Yep.
Yeah, good idea. We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the scholarship, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve this post issuance debt compliance policy and the post issuance debt compliance procedure.
Our financial advisors, Ellers, have given the school district a policy and procedures to follow with the bond dollars. This will guide us in our usage of how we handle those dollars and any procedures that come up in dealing with them.
We need some compliance, is what you're telling us, as part of our procedure.
As part of the SEC.
All right.
After giving us a bunch of money, we need to handle it properly.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. I'll second. Seconded by Luke. Any other questions? All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a resignation at the close of this upcoming school year.
This is for Riley Boukai.
Look for a motion to approve the resignation.
What position is that?
High school science.
Always tough to fill those.
It is.
This one makes me really sad.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Rebecca? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of this resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. As you can see, we'll be busy on the next meeting. See the number of things we've, we're going through, and then including fundraisers. That must be the June meeting, right? That's what that says.
What's that?
Yeah.
June fundraisers.
Yep.
Okay, so take a look, and if there's anything you need or want to add to the agenda, please contact either Laurie or Jeff, and they can see that we get it on here. In closing, there's a couple of different areas that we, that we should at least acknowledge, and one is the Ed Foundation. Brenda?
Yeah, I was going to mention that. The Ed Foundation held their auction on Saturday, and it was very well attended, and they put a lot of hard work into it. It was a fun event, and I'm sure they raised a lot of money. I don't know the amount, but I'd like to thank them for that and for all their donations throughout the year. And also, the robotics team did a demonstration.
That's right.
Yeah, so thank them for showing up for that.
Some here were able to attend. What'd you think?
It's great. It was nice to be there. Yeah. Feels like it's been a long time.
It's a, it's a great social, and on top of that, it's just like you say, it's great to be out and about again.
After three years, this is my first one, and it was, it was incredible to see.
Yeah.
You hear a lot of stories about it.
You hear a lot of.
Nice to be, nice to be in person for it. Good event.
And they work really hard.
Yeah.
They put a lot of work in that.
Yeah, good to acknowledge it. As you can see from the donations, it goes directly back into our kids and our school. Couldn't ask for anything better. A couple of us were able to go to a celebration, an induction, and I'd like Rebecca to carry the ball on that.
Yeah, so I was not at the Ed Foundation event on Saturday because I was at the state speech tournament, which is a nice segue into the event we were at yesterday. But congratulations to the speech team. Took fifth place at state with five medal recipients and 13 total students competing this year. So on Sunday, John Fogerty was inducted into the Minnesota State High School Hall of Fame representing fine arts. For those who don't know, most of us, if you've lived here at any period of time, know that Fogerty has been teaching here for 53 years and has been an instrumental part of the fine arts program. He has built the speech team here from the grassroots up into what can only be considered as a Class A powerhouse. In his tenure, there have been 125 state medal winners, 14 state champions in speech. When you look at the state high school league records for speech, it is Cannon Falls listed consistently within the Class A competition. He is pretty humble about this whole recognition. He doesn't think that he deserves it. So if you say it, see him, do congratulate him. He's getting, I think, a little bit more used to the idea, especially as he spent some time with Joe Mauer on Sunday, who was also inducted as an athlete. Fogerty is retiring, retiring at the end of the year. I use that term loosely because I think that he will always have a hand as much as he can within the speech program. On a personal level, it, it is more than deserved. If you walk. If you walk down the hallway, and he, he said this too, you see a bunch of cases with a bunch of awards for this speech program. And having competed on that team, it was never about the awards. They were really nice, don't get me wrong. Some nicer than others, but it was really about doing our best and trying to push us to do things that we didn't think we could do. And as an educator, he sees potential in all of his students, and he encourages you to do things that you didn't think you could do and pushes you to do different things. You know, I never did extemporaneous speaking, even though he said I should. And I'm willing to admit now, 15 years after, the fact that he is right and was right, and I probably should have. But, you know, he has created a team that is not only successful because of the awards it received, but because of the confidence that he has instilled in each and every single one of those students. And I think speech is such a unique activity because it provides a place for a lot of students who don't see themselves in school, right? They might not be tall enough for the basketball team or, like myself, coordinated to do much of anything, but I can stand in front of a room and talk about anything, and that's because of him. So, and just to come back to the point, none of this was written down. So if John Fogerty was right, I probably should have been in extemporaneous speaking. Congratulations, Fogerty. Well-deserved, and I can't, I've never said this many nice things about him in one time, so I think I need to stop. So thank you.
There's not much else we can say. Reed and I attended with you and found it to be quite a, quite an experience. And again, this is the Minnesota State High School League. Sometimes we plug into the high school league as being in athletics. But there was a, an announcer, I guess, from a high school who'd been dutifully doing their activities for many, many years. Edina, I think, swimming coaches. There was just people who have influenced youth. And that's just kind of what the high school league is supposed to be doing. So it's a, it was a great event, much more overwhelming than I would have thought. And attended by several hundred. There wasn't, wasn't many seats available. So congratulations to a, like she says, a 53-year teacher. We won't see those people anymore. We won't. You know, there's a lot of dedication from all of our educators, but 53 years. So hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to show his, his section of the award where he gets to speak, and they must have interviewed him in the boardroom. And some of his peers were part of that, too. So the presentation was about five minutes long, and we need to see it. We need to honor John as much as we can. So finished for this evening, unless anyone has something for the cause. If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. Oh, thank you.
Motion by Luke, seconded?
Second.
Rebecca on the second. We have a motion to second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.